Welcome to the London Dairy Town Council meeting, tonight being January 16, 2023. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you could please remain standing and have a moment of silence for observance of our national holiday, Martin Luther King Day, and for our first responders and our military, keeping us safe, day in and day out. Thank you very much. Please be seated. First thing we'll address is public comment. Councillors, is there any public comment from you, tonight? Okay, public? Any public comment?
Are we going to be able to ask comments about the different articles as you go through them?
Yeah, tonight is a public hearing, so you will be able to...
I agree.
Ray President, through Gary Drive, and thank you for all coming here and doing great work. But my question is this, that I say a lot of things on the budget, on the warrant articles and so forth, but we have some serious issues we need to address. Water, what I'm talking about, sewer, and our plan, looking forward, and where are we going to get this money and where is our current plan for that? I would personally like to know, and I'm sure a lot of other people would too, some of these costs, just like, I think it's Article 15 now, has been, going to be presented to the voters, and we're talking potentially hundreds of millions of dollars. We've got to figure where that money's coming from. And I know, we've got a lot of people working on that, and that's good. But in the meanwhile, you know, I'm looking at an article in the Manchester Uni Leader on Saturday, that there's a lot of money available. I see the towns in there that are potentially put in for it and getting that money, and I don't see London Dairy mentioned. So, I hope that we are taking appropriate measures for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Anybody else for public comment? Going once, and twice? All right. Okay, now going to public hearing. May I have a motion to open a public hearing?
So moved.
Second? Do I have a second?
Second.
You're in the first and the second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Oh wait, all right, now we're in a public hearing, and we're going to be talking about our, this is the second public hearing, we're going to be talking about the budget tonight. Justin, would you like to lead us off?
Absolutely. So, the budget has not changed since our last meeting. The warrant articles, we will be voting to move them to the warrant today, so that they will be discussed at deliberative session on Saturday, February 11th.
Okay, thank you for that. So, I guess what we're going to do now is we're going to go through the articles one by one, and Mr. Town Manager, will you read some of them, as well as Justin, so that we can get through them? At the end of each one, we're going to ask the council to take a vote, up or down, and it sounds like the Budget Committee has pushed the vote off till Wednesday, so we'll be just asking the council for a vote tonight. Town Councillor John Farrell is not here tonight, as you could see, but we will add his vote by your communication with him to those votes, and have those tallied on the annual report when it comes out. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll start with Article Number Two, Amendment to Town Charter, Treasurer. Shall the municipality approve the charter amendment reprinted and summarized below? Words removed are bracketed, and new words are in bold. Section 5.7, Treasurer. There shall be a town treasurer hereafter called Treasurer who shall have all the powers and duties granted by this charter and state law. The Treasurer shall be, and then bracketed, elected on an at-large basis to a term of three years at the town election, close brackets, and this is all bolded, appointed by the town council upon recommendation of the town manager for a three-year term. That's the end of the bolded text. Vacancies in the office of Treasurer shall be filled pursuant to state law. If the amendment is adopted, the town treasurer shall be appointed by the town council for a three-year term, instead of being elected for a three-year... I think we just discovered some unnecessary language, Mr. Chairman.
What might that be?
It says appointed by the town council for a three-year term, instead of being elected for a three-year term.
Very good. Thank you, Councillor Franz.
No problem.
If the amendment is adopted, the town treasurer shall be appointed by the town council for a three-year term, instead of being elected for a three-year term. If the amendment is adopted, the elected treasurer shall remain in office until the 2024 annual town election. That is the text of Article Two, as it currently appears, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, does it sound like we need an amendment here, as to what was written?
No, that was me struggling with reading comprehension.
Okay. All right, any questions about Article Number Two, from the council? Any questions from the Budget Committee? Okay, any questions from the public, on Number Two? Okay, I'll accept a motion to move Article Number Two to the warrant.
So moved.
Do I get a second? Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Okay, and that's, Chairman votes affirmative, so that's three, three to one, to move it to the warrant. Okay, all of the councils that recommend this article?
Point order, Mr. Chair. Do we, since Chairman Farrell is voting separately, do we need to do a roll call vote for each of these?
I think as long, so if it's unanimous, I don't think we need to, if, I think as long as it's clear who, first of all, there's no legal standard, one way or the other. There's no legal requirement for a roll call vote. If the council feels that a roll call vote is necessary to make sure that it's clear who's in support and who isn't, then it can do that, and if it feels it's unnecessary, it can also do that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Councillor. Okay, so for the council, all those in favor recommended this article as written, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
All those opposed? Okay, opposed, and the Chairman votes affirmative, so that's recommending three to one for this article. Okay, moving on to Article Number Three. Do I have a reader? Justin, do you want to?
Absolutely. Article Number Three, the Fiscal Year 2024 Town Operating Budget. Shall the town raise and appropriate as an operating budget, not including appropriations by special warrant articles and other appropriations voted separately, the amount set forth on the budget posted with the warrant or as amended by the first session, by vote of the first session. For the purposes set forth therein totaling $40,594,648, shall this article be defeated? The default budget shall be $40,595,374, which is the amount of appropriations contained in the operating budget authorized for the previous fiscal year, with certain adjustments required by previous action of the town or by law, or the governing body may hold one special meeting in accordance with RSA 4013X and XVI, to take up the issue of a revised operating budget only. If passed, the article will require the town to raise $21,416,436 in property tax, resulting in a tax rate impact of $4.12, $12.1 cents in FY24, based upon projected assessed values.
Thank you, Justin. Any questions from the council? Any discussion from the Budget Committee? Any discussion from the public? Please approach. Name and address for the record, please.
Christine Perez, 5 Wesley Drive. I just wonder what the percentage of increase is for that, for this year?
We'll turn it over to the numbers guy.
Yeah, that's who I looked at.
You definitely didn't look at me, thank you for that.
So, give me one minute here, I have that.
And then while you're looking, if all the warrant articles are passed, what the percentage, total percentage will be to?
We might have to get back to that one.
I can answer that question. If, if all, so if our budget passes, if the proposed budget passes, and all of the warrant articles pass as well, in terms of the total appropriations that the town is requesting from last year as opposed to this year, we're actually showing a decrease right now. It's a small decrease.
Okay, you don't know the percentage of the small decrease, roughly?
It's, well, I don't know off the top of my head, but it's like $5,000, I think, five, or $10,000 decrease.
0001.
Yeah, it's hardly registering.
Okay, that's fine. So it's flat, is what you're saying?
For the total appropriations, yes.
Thank you. And thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments from the public? Okay, seeing none, I accept a motion to move Article Number Three to the warrant.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I hear a first and a second motion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, Chairman votes affirmative, that's four zero, which we'll be moving that to the warrant. Okay, all those in favor of the council, all those in favor of recommending this article as written, please vote affirmative? All those in favor of recommending the article?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, so that's four zero, the council recommends this article to move forward and to be recommended. Okay, moving on to Article Number Four. Do I have a reader for Article Number Four?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Article Number Four, Expendable Maintenance Trust Fund, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $180,000 to be placed in the town's expendable maintenance trust fund for the purpose of repairing and maintaining town facilities and infrastructure, and further to authorize the use of $90,000 from the June 30th unassigned fund balance towards this appropriation. If passed, this article will require the town to raise $90,000 in property taxes, resulting in a tax rate impact of .017 cents in FY24, based upon projected assessed values.
Okay, thank you for that. Any questions by the council? Seeing none, any questions by the Budget Committee? Seeing none, we'll go to the public. Any questions or comments from the public on this article? Sorry to do it again, but if you could state your name and address for the record.
5 Wesley Drive, London Dairy.
Thank you.
Again, I want to thank you for all you did in bringing this in, it's fabulous. And thank you, Justin, for answering a lot of questions. My only question I have on this is that, at the end of the year, it is looking that we will have about $180,000 in this budget. And over the past five years, or one, two, three, four, five years, we've been asking for $180,000, other than 2021. I just wondered if there's any consideration, since there's $180,000 in it now, and the fire department thing will burn up, that's after the fire department issues are done, if there's any consideration of perhaps not taking any money from the public and just taking $90,000 from the, I call it the reserves. So, that's a thought. Do we really need another $180,000, so that you'll have a balance of $360,000 going into the next year?
Thank you for those comments. Any other comments on this article? Okay, seeing none, I'll accept a motion to move Article Number Four to the warrant.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, having a motion and a second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chairman votes affirmative, any of those opposed? Sorry. Chairman votes affirmative, that's four zero, to move it to the warrant, move Article Number Four to the warrant. All those in favor of recommending the article as written, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? No. Chairman votes affirmative, that's three, one, recommending, for the council. Okay, moving on to Article Number Five. Do I have a reader?
Article Number Five, Roadway Maintenance Expendable Trust Fund, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $300,000 to be placed in the roadway maintenance expendable trust fund. If passed, this article will require the town to raise $300,000 in property taxes, resulting in a property tax, resulting in a tax rate impact of 5.8 cents in fiscal year 24, based upon the projected assessed values.
Thank you, Justin. Okay, move it back to your council. Any questions on this one? From the council? Any questions or comments from the Budget Committee? Okay, we'll move to the public. Any questions or comments from the public?
Christine Perez, 5 Wesley Drive. I understand there was a culvert that's being repaired, it's partially repaired, and the estimated cost of this is about $1.5 million, but it's my understanding that in this current year, we will have already spent about $860,000 towards that, with a balance of $2,133,000. I'm just wondering if we really need to put in, again, this much money into the, again this year, with a balance at the end of the year? Even if you take the $900,000 that you probably need in addition, and that's overestimating, for the culvert, you will still have a remaining of $1.2 million? I don't know, I'm not that quick on numbers, roughly.
So that 800,000 you're mentioning is not just that 1.5?
Is not.
It's part of the 1.5. It's part of it, but it is not, that entire thing is not part of it.
I understand, but even...
So you'll actually end up with a balance, I believe it's going to be a little bit below 1 million, when it's all said and done with the current projects.
Okay.
And that's part of the reason we actually decreased it from 650, which is what we normally request, down to 300. As you can imagine, road supplies are not getting cheaper. The tar and all that, asphalt, all that kind of stuff. Exactly, it's getting more expensive, so that's part of the reason we left that 300,000 in there to request it. This allows us to maintain other roads, and you're looking at potentially, I'm not the DPW guy here, but it's essentially shim and overlay, which is kind of just to coat it over, make it look purdy, not fully reconstructed. If we have to fully reconstruct it, that money will disappear very quickly.
Okay, here's my question, though. So you're saying, once the culvert is done, you'll still have $1 million in there?
Around that, I believe.
Okay, and you're asking for 300,000, so you'll have 1.3 million?
Correct.
Do we have anything that's being looked at, to spend that 1.3?
I believe we do, but it becomes a priority list of what roads are deteriorating first, fastest, and honestly, after the winter, with the salt in the plows, it becomes more obvious which ones need to be redone quicker.
Because we didn't spend any money in '21 and '22.
Correct, and that was done on purpose, to prepare for that 1.5 million dollar expense.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, I wasn't at the last budget one.
No problem. Any other comments or questions for the public? Okay, we'll move it back here to the council. I'll accept a motion to move Article Number Five to the warrant.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, hearing a motion and a second, I'll get to, go to a vote. All those in favor of moving this article to the warrant, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, Chairman votes affirmative as well, so that's four zero, to move it to the warrant. Okay, may I get, all in favor of recommending this article as written, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed.
And Chairman votes affirmative, so that's three to one, to recommend this article. Okay, Article Number Six, Mike, do I have a reader?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. DPW Equipment Vehicle Leases, to see if the town will vote to authorize the town manager to enter into up to a 10-year lease agreement in the amount of $670,000 for the purpose of leasing three six-wheel trucks and proper equipment, and one utility pickup truck, and to raise and appropriate the sum of $85,000 for the first year's payment for that purpose. This lease agreement contains an escape clause. If passed, this article will require the town to raise $85,000 in property taxes, resulting in a tax rate impact of .016 cents in FY24, based upon projected assessed values.
Okay, thank you for that. Any questions from the council? Any questions from the Budget Committee? Okay, going to the public, any questions or comments from the public? Okay, seeing none, I'll accept a motion to move Article Number Six to the warrant.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, having a motion and a second, all those in favor of moving this to, this to, Article Number Six to the warrant, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
You said aye and opposed, which one would you like?
You said to move it forward, never mind, I was waiting for the next one.
Sorry. Let me do that again, okay? So, I apologize, no problem. Let me get, I have, right now I have a motion and a second on the floor, I'd like to get a vote here on this, and this is to move the Article Number Six to the warrant. So I can get a vote, please?
Aye.
Okay, and Chairman votes affirmative, so that's four zero, to move Article Number Six to the warrant. Now we're going to go to recommending this article, so may I have, we don't need a motion for that, so all those in favor of recommending this article, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so Chairman votes affirmative, so that's three, one, to recommend this article. Okay, we're going to go to Article Number Seven. Do I have a reader?
Yes, you do. Article Number Seven, Fire Department Equipment Capital Reserve Fund, to see if the town will vote and raise, vote to raise and appropriate $100,000 to be placed in the fire equipment capital reserve fund, and further authorize the use of $50,000 from June 30th unassigned, unassigned fund balance towards the appropriation. If passed, this article will require the town to raise 50,000 in property tax, resulting in a tax rate impact of one penny in the fiscal year 24, 2024, based upon projected assessed values.
Thank you for that, Justin. Okay, so we're going to bring it to the council. Any questions or comments on Article Number Seven? Hearing none, anything from the Budget Committee? Okay, we'll go to the public. Any questions or comments on Article Number Seven? Okay, we'll bring it back to the council. I'll accept a motion to move Article Number Seven to the warrant.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, hearing a motion and a second, all those in favor of moving Article Number Seven to the warrant, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The Chairman votes affirmative, we've moved Article Number Seven to the warrant by a vote of four to zero. Now, I would like to get a vote to recommend Article Number Seven. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, so we recommend, the council recommends, four to zero, Article Number Seven. Mike, do I have a reader for Article Eight?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Article Number Eight, Pillsbury Cemetery Expansion Capital Reserve Fund, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $75,000 to be placed in the Pillsbury Cemetery Expansion Capital Reserve Fund, and further to authorize the use of $25,000 from the June 30th unassigned fund balance towards this appropriation. If passed, this article will require the town to raise $50,000 in property taxes, resulting in a tax impact of .010, I believe it should be dollars, Justin, correct?
Yes.
In FY24, based upon projected assessed values.
Okay. Counsel, any questions or comments on Article Number Eight?
I have a question. Justin, how much is in this fund at the moment?
Absolutely. So currently, there's approximately $274,833.74. With that in mind, it's important to remember, or for me to state, that back in 2019 was the last time we expanded this, and it cost about $325,000 back in 2019. Sorry, 2019 was the last time we expanded it, not 2019.
And it would be the same amount of land that we're expanding? Same amount of acreage?
I believe so, but it...
Equal project?
I believe so, I cannot say that with 100% certainty, but it would be the next phase of it, and I would not anticipate it costing less than 325,000, which we currently do not have.
Okay, thank you.
And again, those were based on 2019. I'm assuming prices have increased since then.
Yeah, well, maybe we could save a little bit if we didn't pave the whole thing, and do like they used to do the old days.
I won't pretend like I know about cemeteries.
No, no, I'm just saying.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
All right, from the council, any other comments or questions about Pillsbury Cemetery, Article Number Eight? Okay, seeing none, move to the Budget Committee. Any comments or questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I just wanted to say that I'm on the Board of Justices for the cemetery.
Oh, okay.
And this, this article didn't pass last year, so we didn't put anything in the, in the Cemetery Expansion Capital Reserve Fund last year, and as Justin pointed out, we probably don't quite have enough in there to do the next phase, and, and we need to do that in the reasonably near future, or we're going to have a problem.
Or we're required to have that space for people, to bury people, so...
Exactly.
My, my understanding is, within the next two to three years, we're going to need to expand the cemetery.
So this is really, what this is doing is offsetting a cost that could be coming in three years in one lump sum.
So similar, similar to what we did with the roadway maintenance, we are essentially saving up and piecemealing it through the years, rather than asking at one point, at one tax rate setting, we need now 350,000, and you see your tax rate bump way up.
I understand.
Yep. No, I'm just explaining for everyone.
Oh, I'm just, I got it.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the Budget Committee? Seeing none, we'll move this to the public for any questions or comment on the Pillsbury Cemetery Expansion, Article Eight only.
Christine Perez, 5 Wesley Drive. Did we know how many plots we have left at the cemetery?
Mike, Justin?
I don't, I don't have the answer to that, but I could tell you that Mr. Wally is the person who would have the answer to that. I excused him from being here tonight, based on a family commitment that he had, but I can certainly get that information for you and give it to you tomorrow.
Because I think that came up, questioning that, when this was talked about last time, exactly how many plots. I understand that, and you're saying that it needs to be done within the next two to three years, correct?
Correct, and my understanding is that if this does not pass, we will have to adjust the way that we currently sell the plots.
I don't know what that means.
We're selling them at a certain rate now.
Right.
That would have to be significantly adjusted, so that people wouldn't be able to purchase as many plots as they want to purchase, because if people aren't just buying a single plot, they want a set of...
Correct. I understand that, but prices are going up, so having to adjust that is not really out of the question. I just think that you've got to, over, about $280,000 in there now, and if it doesn't need to be done for a couple of years, perhaps this is not the time to be doing it, especially not knowing what the possibility of, of plots that we, we have right now. And I understand that you're coming in at a flat budget, and I understand, and I think that's wonderful, but I don't know if any of you were watching the news today, but we are not going to have a flat government, so things are going to get worse before they, they get better, and that's every news station that you listen to. So, bear that in mind, that you have a lot of people who do not get any aid, who are going to work every day, and who are paying for gas, and who are paying for electricity and outrageous bills, so just bear that in mind. If this is something that could be put off, I know it doesn't seem like a lot to you, but every penny counts when I go to the grocery store.
So, I just messaged Dave, and he informed me, we have less than 200 plots available.
And how many people, how many people did we put into that cemetery last year?
I can tell, so I don't have the number, but I can tell you that in speaking with Dave, I don't know if people are dying at a greater rate, or if people are just buying plots at a greater rate, but it is a huge increase.
Well, it's probably a huge increase because of COVID, I imagine, and it's probably a huge increase because of fear, for another reason for buying them, but...
I also remember at the, at the time we had him, we had that same question asked, and he said that based off of the people that have used it over the past few years, this was what he predicted, those 200 lots would be sold through in the year, two or three, second part of it, or the third year. So, we would need this money by that time to be able to do something, otherwise we would be asking the, the folks in, out there... be asking the folks out there to raise $300,000 instead of doing it $100,000 in the next three years. Did you have a comment to that, or?
Yeah, I was gonna say that when we run out of those 200 plots, we need to have the next phase already-
Done.
-ready for burials and for sales.
I understand that.
So if we, if we wait, you know, if we push this down the road a couple of years, then we're behind the eight ball for getting the work done.
I understand that.
So we're trying to be, the effort here is not to, you know, the effort here is to be forward-thinking and not end up hammering the taxpayer at a later date.
But you already have $280,000 in there.
Right, and that's not anticipated to be able to do what we needed to do.
I understand, but you have-
Back in 2019, it was over 325,000.
I get it. But it's, you already have 280,000, so you will not be asking the public for 350,000 in a one-shot deal, so.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. I guess this would be, I forgot your first name, I'm sorry.
Patrick.
Patrick, I apologize. Patrick, so when was the last time we increased the cost of the cemetery plots? And how do we compare price-wise to other cemetery plots as far as cost goes?
I don't have the answers to that. Mr. Wally would definitely have the answers, but I can say that the conversation has not been about increasing the price. The conversation has been about not allowing pre-sales, or severely limiting, limiting the number of pre-sales, so that somebody doesn't buy 10 plots for their family, and then we're having to build out further because we have, you know, lots of empty spaces, not, we can't use.
Right, and I'm gonna bring up another point. So my aunt bought, I don't even know, 10, I believe, lots in Mount Auburn Cemetery in Watertown, Massachusetts, I mean, in Arlington, Massachusetts. So out of those 10, only four were used, so they don't necessarily all get used. What is the time for hold, I mean, do we have constraints around this? Do we, being smart and being able to resell, or once it's sold, it's sold?
First of all, I don't believe we can require people to resell.
That's correct.
But the problem is that-
So you have a lot of empty-
People don't buy, you know, people buy a plot of, say, eight, if they, or possibly, and they put one marker for those eight sites, and then there's corner markers, so-
I understand.
And then they put one, they do one interment on one corner and one interment on another corner, it would be difficult to resell parts of those eight, for example, because they're for that whole family and there's markers already placed.
Well, I mean, I know we sold part of ours.
And I sold part of mine at the Cape, too.
I'm just saying it's not always very smooth because of the way the monuments are placed, because of the way the markers are placed, it's not an easy answer. Because I went in with that point of view, I was like, we need to, you know, buy back these people that don't want them and don't intend to use them.
Right, because it's a waste.
Or have moved elsewhere in the country, we need to buy those back and have them to use, but that isn't as easy as it sounds, is my point.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we were looking at it and thinking about it, just because we should. And I know I'll wait to deliberative to make my changes, but I know it's necessary, I know we need it, but without knowing if we're compatible with everybody on what we charge, I mean, that's, you know, important, that we're about the same price as everybody else. I can do some research when I-
Mr. Chairman, I just want to reiterate that this is a legal requirement. We are required as a town to make provision for the burial of residents who want to get buried here. And so if we were to get into a situation where all of a sudden there are no plots, we can't not bury people. And so that's why this careful, advanced planning is so important.
And you said we had how many open spots already? How many?
Around 200.
200.
And this past year, in this past year, we sold about 43, and in '21, we sold closer to 70.
I'm sorry, Justin?
In this past year, we sold 43, and in '21, we sold closer to 70. So within the last two years, we have sold 113.
May I ask another question?
Please come to the, Mike, please, state your name and address one more time.
Christine Perez, five Wesley Drive, I thought we were gonna look into a, I don't know what you call it.
Column barium.
Huh?
Column barium, that is certainly another option.
Because I just, a couple of years, I had plots down at the Cape, but everybody wants to get cremated now, so, and it was a family plot. And yes, we had a marker in the front, my parents were buried in the front, but we also had plots in the back, and we just, we sold the plots in the back for a huge profit because they had gone up so much in price, and it was only nine years, okay? But I think before we do this and worry about this, we need to look more into perhaps the most economical thing for us to do. We don't have to bury them, we just have to put them somewhere.
Absolutely, now, may I respond?
Yeah.
We're already looking at column bariums and what they would cost, but the initial reports that I'm getting from Mr. Wally are that the cost difference between a column barium and the next phase of building out, it's about the same cost, if not more for the column barium. So I think that's a good solution long-term, but we already have the plan in place to do the next phase, and the land is there, and it's reasonably simple. The column barium would be the step, I believe, after that.
So the column barium can cost up to $50,000, and at that point, you still need to build the roads and everything around it, similar to like you would with a regular cemetery.
And how many, how many urns would something like that hold?
So that, I'm not 100% sure, I'm waiting on-
It just, it just seems to me, and I will bring it up at deliberative, that we need to do more research before, if we've only spent, sold in the past two years, and we don't know-
So it depends on what size you're looking at.
What size?
What size column barium you're looking at.
Of course, of course. I just think it's, it's something that could easily be put off until more research is done.
So it has been researched, unfortunately, the individual is not here.
Right.
It also failed one year, is my memory.
Correct. Which has put us behind the eight ball, what they say, it used to be a $50,000 request by itself, we increased it to 75 because we fallen behind the eight ball, and we don't want to have to next year have all of a sudden 100,000, 125, 150, where we're then having this conversation of, well, now you're looking for two, three cents on the tax rate instead of just one.
Okay, but we have no idea, maybe two years from now, things might be looking better, so, the future, we don't know what the future's gonna hold.
Yeah, the other thing I wanted to mention, too, was as, if you're following all of the, you know, hearings, we also had testimony that we are not sure how much ledge is actually gonna have to be taken out of that spot of it, whereas we didn't hit as much this time, so that we're talking about pricing things. We need to have enough money not only to take care of it with maybe perhaps a rougher installation, but also have enough money, or have that completed by the time we hit the 200 mark, so.
That's exactly right. And I guess the last point I would make, Mr. Chairman, is, you know, we're talking about cemeteries and taxes tonight, and I think Mark Twain is the one who said that there's only two certainties in life, death and taxes. People are going to continue to die, and whether we bury them in column bariums or we do it in the ground, we need to make financial provision for that.
I was gonna make another comment, but I couldn't, I can't top that one, so. I'm gonna ask for a motion to move Article, Article Number Eight to the warrant.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, all those in favor of moving Article Number Eight to the warrant, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, chairman votes affirmative, that's four zero, to move this Article Number Eight to the warrant. All right, now I'm gonna need to vote on recommending this article as written, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Opposed, okay, and chairman votes affirmative, so that's three one, to recommend this article. Okay, we're going to Article Number Nine right now, do I have a reader?
See if, Information Technology Capital Reserve Fund, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $25,000 to be placed in the Information Technology Capital Reserve Fund. If passed, this article will require the town to raise $25,000 in property taxes resulting in a tax rate impact of .005 in FY 24 based upon projected assessed values.
Great, thank you very much, Mike. Okay, counsel, do we have any questions or comments on Article Number Nine?
Joe?
Yep.
Could I ask Mr. Malaguti to please articulate exactly for the residents what information and technology includes and covers, so what this money's would go to?
Yes.
Thank you.
It's an excellent question, and this is a fund that was established last year, we didn't have a fund like this before. And really, the genesis of this was what was, what we were seeing with data breaches and folks who were able to penetrate municipalities in New Hampshire's computer systems and transfer out millions of dollars that was not ultimately covered by insurance. And as well with the war in Ukraine and, you know, the participation of overseas state actors in our elections and in just trying to sow discord here in the United States, which precipitated warnings from our insurance carrier, Primex, about the need of all municipalities to do more to shore up this important area. It's not Justin's and Kelly's and my personal information on our town systems, it's our taxpayers', it's our residents' information. And so this is somewhere, this is something where we've come a long ways in the last year, but we've got, we've got a lot more to do. And this is simply creating a savings account, if you will, so that we can plan for those upgrades on a continuous basis, and so that we're not trying to do it out of the budget. I strike that, I will strike that, we do try to do it out of the budget, but these things are not cheap. And so there are, you know, Harvey Road culvert-type projects in this arena that require us to get creative about how we fund them.
So can I chime in here as well?
Please proceed.
One of the other items, the council recently has accepted, unanticipated revenue for a endpoint detection system that we received through grant funding. The match for that will be likely from this fund. This gives us the ability to do things like that and potentially use this money to go out and use, forget federal money, so the cost is lower on the taxpayers', if that makes sense.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Okay, great. Let's see, where was I, I was on the council, so any others from the council, questions or comments? Okay, budget committee, any questions or comments on this article? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to the public for Article Number Nine, Information Technology Capital Reserve, questions only. Seeing none from the public, I'll bring it back to the council and accept the motion to move Article Number Nine to the warrant.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Chairman, just one thing that I, if you'll entertain, one comment that I omitted was, last year we asked for $100,000, consistent with our effort to get the total appropriations request that we have this year down to level with last year, and it's actually now under last year's. We elected to request $75,000 less on this one than we did last year.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Just to come back to the vote, chairman votes affirmative, so that means that it's four zero was the vote to move Article Number Nine to the warrant. So now we're gonna be voting to recommend this article as written, please signify by saying aye, town council?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? The town council recommends this Article Number Nine, four zero. We'll now move on to Article Number Ten, do I have a reader?
Yes, Article Number Ten, Recreation Department Capital Reserve Fund, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $10,000 to be placed in the Recreation Department Capital Reserve Fund. If passed, this article will require the town to, the town to raise $10,000 in property taxes resulting in a tax rate impact of .2 cents in fiscal year 24 based upon projected assessed values.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions or comments from the council?
No, Justin.
Sorry, Justin, any questions or comments? No? Okay. Any questions or comments from the budget committee? All right, going to the public, any questions or comments? This was an easy one. Okay, we'll bring it back to the council, accept the motion to move Article Number Ten to the warrant.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Okay, hearing a motion and a second, all those in favor of moving this Article Number Ten Recreation Department Capital Reserve Fund to the warrant, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, four zero. Now, we're gonna take a vote to recommend the article as written, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's four zero, chairman votes affirmative to recommend this article. We're gonna move to Article Number Eleven, Mike, do I have a person to read?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Article Eleven, Ratify a New Collective Bargaining Agreement Between Lunenary Police Employees Association and the Town of Lunenary, to see if the town will vote to approve the cost items included in the collective bargaining agreement between the Town of Lunenary and the Lunenary Police Employees Association, which calls for the following additional appropriations for salaries and benefits over what was required under the current expiring agreement with the employees of the union. FY 24, estimated increase from budget, $337,506, estimated tax increase, tax rate increase from budget, .065. FY 25, estimated increase from previous fiscal, $478,440, estimated tax rate increase from previous fiscal, .092. FY 26, estimated increase from previous fiscal, $289,629, estimated increase from previous, tax rate increase from previous fiscal, .056. FY 27, estimated increase from prior fiscal, $166,596, estimated tax rate increase from previous fiscal, .032. FY 28, estimated increase from previous fiscal, $221,685, estimated tax rate increase from previous fiscal, .043. And further to raise and appropriate the sum of $337,506 for FY 24 expenses, such sum representing the additional costs attributable to the increase in salaries and benefits over those of the appropriation at the current staffing levels paid under any existing agreements. Lunenary Police Employees Association represents 67 full-time and three-part-time department employees. If passed, this article will require the town to raise $337,506, $337,506 in property taxes resulting in a tax rate impact of .065 in FY 24 based upon projected assessed values.
Thanks, Justin, I just had to, I didn't want to fill that. All right, can I bring it back to the council, any questions or comments? All right, no questions or comments on the council, anything for the budget committee? Questions or comments? All right, moving it to the public, anything on Number Eleven, Article Number Eleven? Okay, seeing none, I'll accept the motion to move Article Number Eleven to the warrant.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I hear a motion and a second, all those in favor of movement Article Number Eleven to the warrant, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, chairman votes affirmative, that's four zero, to move Article Number Eleven to the warrant. Now we're gonna vote on recommending this article as written, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the council recommends this four zero, gonna go to Article Number Twelve, do I have a reader?
Yes, Article Number Twelve, Authorization for Special Meeting on Cost Items. Shall the town, if Article Eleven is defeated, authorize the town council to call one special meeting at its option to address Article Eleven cost items only. If passed, this article will require the town to raise zero dollars in property taxes resulting in a tax rebate of zero in FY 24 based upon projected assessed values.
Thanks, Justin. Okay, bringing it back here to the council for any questions or comments? Seeing none, out to the budget committee, any questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, out to the public, any questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, I'll move this back to the council for a vote to accept, I'll accept the motion, sorry, to move Article Number Twelve to the warrant.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I hear a motion and a second, all those in favor of moving Number Twelve, Article Number Twelve to the warrant, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chairman votes affirmative, four zero, we're moving this article to the warrant. Okay, now this is to recommend, the council will recommend this article as written, for you to recommend it, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, town council recommends this four zero, this article four zero. Next one is Article Number Thirteen, Mike, do I have a reader?
Yes, Mr. Chair-
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Add Full-Time Library Technician to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $108,000, uh, one hundred, $108,859, I apologize, for the purpose of adding a full-time library technician to the Leach Library staff. If passed, this article will require the town to raise $108,859 in property taxes, resulting in a tax rate impact of .021 in FY '24, based upon projected assessed values.
Okay, are we concerned the way that's written? Shouldn't it be, shouldn't it be say $108,000?
I don't believe that's the convention that the rest of the warrant observes. Justin, do you?
Um...
I don't see another example of us doing that.
I think it's written fine.
Okay.
I can take a look at other ones, and that's an easy switch, a deliberative, if that is typically the case.
Okay. All right, bringing the Article Number Thirteen to the council, any comments on that as well?
Just that the library trustees had already voted on this, six-zero, recommended yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments on this from the council? Any other comments or questions from the Budget Committee? Okay, going to the public for Article Number Thirteen, adding a full-time librarian technician. Any questions or comments? Please state your name and address.
Donna Plant, I'm the Assistant Director at the library.
Thank you, Donna, please proceed.
Sure, so I just wanted to comment, Aaron has spoken a lot to the library's staffing at previous meetings in the budget season, and I just had a couple more things to add, so I just wanted to add that at this point. Just that we did look at how staff hours are broken down, because I know there was a question about whether there were always eight or more staff available at any given time. There are about three to four staff members scheduled at the public desk at any given time during open hours, however, there's a lot of other things happening in the background that makes those staff unavailable to help someone walking in. So desk coverage accounts for about 39% of our overall staff time, and all other time is spent doing cataloging, processing materials, managing subscriptions, paying the bills, promoting the library and the collection, lots of more things such as that. We did bring a kind of a visual breakdown a couple meetings ago that provided some more information on that, but we know it is a challenge to communicate that kind of invisible time to the public sometimes, and we're, we are working on that and hoping to get more out there. In terms of, we had a question from the public about how staff is allocated. The majority of staff time is definitely scheduled during open hours, that's the concentrated staff during that time. We do have staff coming in about half an hour early to prepare the building to open. And then, aside from that, we're occasionally offering after-hour programs to best reach busy adults and families who are looking for us to do that. And then, occasionally, we're also staying late to manage fines and clean up or wrap up after some programs in the evenings and also our board meetings. We know that we're often compared to the police and fire departments. It makes sense, but we do have very different services, we have different missions. It's not, in our opinion, a really effective comparison because of that. We, they have, or they're often scheduling staff 24/7, where we're concentrating on our open hours, which is 60 hours a week. And we definitely agree safety is a priority, but the library also contributes to community safety by really providing a public safe space for everybody and offering free services and resources. We also anticipate that as families are seeing that budget crunch at home, that they're going to be turning to the library more to save money, which we can definitely help them with. And because comparing us to, say, police and fire is a difficult comparison, what we did is actually compared ourselves to a couple other libraries that have very similar budgets and similar, what am I trying to say? Similar budget and hours, and they're also actually pretty close by as well. So we found that the closest comparison was Rogers Memorial Library in Hudson and the Merrimack Public Library. And just to give you a feel for staffing, currently, without this warrant article, we have a full-time equivalency of 13.9. The Rogers Memorial Library in 2021 reported a full-time equivalency of 14.8, and the Merrimack Public Library reported a full-time equivalency of 15.9. So, we are a little bit behind, actually, so we do feel that we are justified in asking for this additional person at this time.
Okay, any questions?
Real quick, I just want to point out that you also had expanded your daily subscriptions to newspapers and stuff, so as you mentioned, you know, where people are having a financial crunch at home, you had broadened and widened that, newspapers and subscription services that are available to read online, correct?
Definitely, yes.
And my comment is, please, onto the library, so unfortunately for me, I understand the plight that they have, it's been kind of ground into my head as to where exactly you guys need that, that support, so as you ask those questions, I'm kind of on the other side of the fence. I know that we can't spend money where we don't need to spend money, 100% understand that, but again, when you're explained where the details would be and where they would use that, all of those programs that are continuing to go up, especially the children's readers, the adult educators, the adult readers, that's where they don't have, believe it or not, they have to turn people away because they don't have enough personnel. So, when I'm looking at the places that, you know, look, I mean, this is one of those things which is great, you know? I personally, as a human being, would recommend it, right? So, the point is, is that you have to kind of be involved with the library and understand the library for those people who don't particularly go to the library and use it, then it's probably not something that they would want to vote on. So, it's kind of like something that we're going to, we're putting out, I think it's a good idea to put it out to the town, sorry, I didn't mean to just look at you for it, but I mean, just take a look and see what the appetite is for this one, and so, any other comments? I just want to...
I do want to say that during power outages, and when people are out of power, the library is generated and usually is open and allows people to stay there longer than normal hours. I remember one year that we were out of power for over a week, and we were panicking on how to get the newspaper out the door, and the library opened the basement to us and allowed us to produce that paper that week in your basement, which was very, very kind of you. So, you do offer a housing during storms and crisis like that, you do have that basement down there for that. The other thing is, the library, you guys have friends of the library, and you do do fundraising on your own, is that correct?
That's correct.
And I've heard you're now doing more fundraising with the friends to increase bringing in more, you know, more funds, and I think it's important. The other thing I think that the library offers is for kids, they can't stay necessarily in the schools, they have the ability to walk over to your library and to stay there and get their homework done, and you have a lot more material than the school libraries sometimes do. So there are other points that I just wanted to point out about the positive aspects of the library, and I'm a big fan of the library, so, thank you.
Well, thanks, Council, for those comments. I think that, you know, like I said, to reiterate, I think you should have heard from two councils that have kind of been more involved in that library and understand that the plight and the ask. But I just have one quick question before I turn it back over to accept a motion. In your opinion, do you feel that this particular person, if the town should vote the person and you hire it, would that increase the amount of services that you're going to be able to provide to the Town of Lunenary?
Yes, definitely.
And that's really what it comes down to, I mean, really, just to say a sentence, so, vote for it or not vote for it. I mean, if you want more services, vote for it. If you don't, then don't vote for it, simple as that, I think, so. All right, anything else?
Mr. Chair, first of all, thank you for coming and giving us that information. My question last week was like, I think I asked the director to convince me, you know, and I wasn't yet convinced, so I appreciate you bringing more data to the table and trying to convince us. You know, my concern is, first of all, I advocate more services at the library and a strong and healthy library, absolutely. My concern this year was simply related to the fact that we're cutting, not cutting on the positions, we're freezing other positions. That's where my concern lay, that maybe this wasn't the year, but I appreciate you coming with more data.
Any other comments? Okay. Any, anything else for public comment? Thank you very much for your testimony.
Thank you.
I just have a question. Where were the...
Name and address for the record, I'm sorry.
Christine Perez of Five Buzz Leader.
Thank you.
What positions were frozen?
No positions were frozen.
Did you say it?
Are we talking about the library or...
No, not in the library, in the town. What positions were frozen in the town?
No, Mike, do you want to elaborate?
Sure. So, I think it's a terminology, a difference of terminology here, so recall that, so there were two, there was really, there were two challenges that we entered this budget season trying to address. The first was that we had lines such as vehicle maintenance and building maintenance at the police department and the fire department training that had never been, I should say, I say never, but over, let's say, the last 10 years, had really not been looked at in a healthy way, so that the default budget was keeping up with the reality that everything was increasing.
Can I stop you there? Because I, I'm just stopping you there. I guess what I'm asking is, I should have phrased that in a different way so that you didn't have to go into all that. Do we have all the firefighter, fire personnel that we need, or are we not hiring any because of the budget and the police?
I'm not sure I understand the...
So, we are, yes, we're freezing three police positions.
And what does that mean?
To allow us to budget them differently and budget them at the lower cost.
Okay.
At the lowest step. As I've explained throughout the entire thing, throughout this entire process, that, it's a budgeting mechanism.
Right.
It allows us to budget default and operating separately.
Yep.
And it allows me to move funds, as Mike was saying, to the accounts that have been ignored for a while. I've explained to Chief Bernard that should the right personnel come along, I will work with him within the confines of the budget to make sure that we do not lose the ability to hire that individual, even though those positions are frozen.
Okay, so I guess that was my question, and that's my concern. Yes, you would be able to get them, but technically, we, you know, we as a town have chosen to freeze.
I don't like the word "freeze."
But that's what they're using.
Yeah, so, so we're budgeting, so what, the finance director said...
Not budgeting for police, but now we want to budget for the library.
So, in our default, in our default budget, with things such as insurance and that aspect, we legally have to offer a family plan should an open position be filled with someone that's family. That's a legal requirement, we can't say, no. So, that right there, $34,000, when we are now budgeting that police officer at the starting rate, we're now able to take that $34,000 and budget it at the buyout or the lowest possibility and use that money to then fund their vehicle maintenance.
I understand, but I think, I think my point is, is that we're not asking to, I guess, my point, is my point being missed? My point is that we're, we're asking them not to put the money in for police officers, but we're asking the town, yes, I understand, if he finds somebody, you'll budget him, you'll rob Peter to pay Paul, I get it, but we are asking for a library position, and I, it's just me, I personally have a problem with that at this time, where, in the economy that we're in.
So, the other thing I'd like to just say to keep in mind here is, we historically have had open positions in the past year, so essentially, rather than...
Oh, I know, I know.
That's essentially what we're taking, is we're taking those that we've historically had open.
Right.
And saying, all right, we're going to work with us, we'll budget them at the lowest cost and allow us to move everything else around. I understand your point, but I just want to make sure you understand we're not...
I do, and I understand...
I'm not telling the police department, hey, no.
I know, I understand we carried that money, many, somebody kept bringing it up year after year, and that's...
And I just, I want to be crystal, crystal clear about this. We are, we have not told the police department that they cannot hire three officers. On the contrary, what we've said throughout this process is, this budgetary law doesn't give us the ability to do what you and I might think is the easiest thing to do, which is just to increase the budget for the vehicle maintenance and training lines by what it would take to get it much closer to reality. We have to, we have to take that money from somewhere else, and this is a two-step process. In this budget year, we are going to budget those PD positions differently. That's what we're doing. We're not freezing them, we're not eliminating them, we're budgeting them differently, which frees up money for us to reinforce those lines in default that will set us on firm ground going forward. Once we've done that, I expect we would return to budgeting those lines the way that we've historically budgeted them. Justin and I have spent a lot of time working on this. We think that, given the comings and goings at the police department in any given year, even if we are, let's say tomorrow, fully staffed at the police department, there's going to be two or three, four, five people who retire over the next year, and so there are extended periods of time when, just through attrition, even if you're at full staffing or you're striving for full staffing, as opposed to what we've been doing, which is funding these other lines with open positions, positions that we are not filling, we don't have any intention to fill them. Even if, even if that's the case, the money will be there, and so, and so that's how Justin and I have looked at this. It is, we have made commitments to the police department that, look, we are, we are all seeking the same goal here, and that is a healthy police department, the best police department in the state with the best equipment, the best training, the best, the best of everything. And I think we've done that. We've done it a little bit indirectly, but we've still done it, and I just do not want the impression out there that we are freezing anything, eliminating anything. That is not the case, that is not the intent, and I'm happy to take any questions on how we've achieved that.
Mike, the simple word, looking up in Merriam's dictionary, has a few different types of definitions. Everybody knows frozen would be water being frozen, right? But strictly, it says prevent an asset from being used, stopping a particular item. These are words that are absolutely opposite of what we're doing, so that's the reason why I took that answer and said, no, we're not freezing it, because if you just look at the actual definition, we're not, we're doing exactly the opposite of that. We're pausing something, we're not stopping, we're not preventing, we're not putting an extreme, what was the other word? Extreme locked position into it at all. So those are the definitions, you can look it up yourself. So that's, that's the reason why I said, no, we're not freezing it, because that's the definition I use from the dictionary, so. All right, any other comments? Yes, please.
Just, maybe you can clarify this for me. The library is non-union, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
And that position, now, that position was for $50,000?
Fifty-something, yeah, all-in, a hundred and...
I know it's all-in, it's a hundred and something.
So, are we going to adjust the salary?
The salary, yes.
So the salary would be $59,363.20 is what I'm budgeting it at.
And that is a non-union position. All right, thank you.
All right, any other comments or questions from the council? All right, anything for the Budget Committee, any other public? Just want to make sure, because we had back and forth for a while. Okay, excellent, so that, that is number, Article Number Thirteen, so I'm going to accept a motion to move Article Number Thirteen to the warrant.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, hearing a motion and a second, may I get a vote to move Article Number Thirteen to the warrant?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and Chairman votes affirmative as well. There was no negative, so four-zero, which moves Number Thirteen to the warrant. Now, this is a vote to recommend this article as written. Please signify by saying aye if you recommend.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Council votes four-zero, Chairman votes affirmative, and we're moving on to Number Fourteen, Article Number Fourteen. Let's see, Justin, do I have a reader, sir?
Absolutely. Article Number Fourteen, Cable Equipment Capital Reserve Fund. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $32,500 to be placed in the capital, or in the, to be placed in the Cable Equipment Capital Reserve Fund with funding to come from the annual distribution of public, educational, and governmental access programming from the current franchise agreement. agreement. If passed, this article will require the town to raise $0 in property tax, resulting in a tax rate impact of $0 in fiscal year '24 based upon projected assessed values.
Thanks, Justin, I appreciate you reading that. Okay, now we're gonna go to the council. Is there any questions on article number 14? Any comments? Okay, seeing none, uh, any questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to the public for any questions on comment, or comments for article number 14, Cable Equipment Capital Reserve Funds only. Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back to, can I get, uh, can I accept a motion to move article number 14 to the warrant?
So moved.
No second?
Second, I'm sorry.
You know, problem. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of moving article number 14 to the warrant, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Chairman votes affirmative, that's 3-0, we'll get Jim's vote when he comes back in. Okay, now we're gonna recommend, uh, we're gonna see if we can recommend this article as written. If you recommend this, please signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, and, and any opposed? Okay, and Chairman votes affirmative, so 3-0 to recommend, and we're gonna get Jim, like I said, when we get back. Now, we're gonna go to article number 15, Mr. Town Manager.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I think for clarity's sake, it would be helpful if I read for everybody's, just memory, what this article was proposed to look like at the last meeting, and then how it's, it's changed based on the input that was, was given at that meeting.
Okay, because you didn't start yet, I want to go back to Council Jim. Council Jim, we just voted to, um, we got a motion and a second to move article number 14 for the Cable Equipment Capital Reserve to the warrant. What say you?
Aye.
Vote affirmative to move it to the warrant or not?
Correct.
Okay, excellent. And the last one, please, Counselor, if you could vote to recommend or not recommend this article. The vote was 3-0 so far.
Vote to recommend.
Okay, so that's 4-0, please let the record show, Council Jim came back, and we have 4-0 to move this article to the warrant, and 4-0 to recommend it by the Town Council. Please proceed with article number 15.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So just, again, this is how it looked last time, and then I'll read what we're proposing it can look like based on the input. To see if the town supports raising at least several and likely tens of millions of dollars in property taxes required to acquire, construct, and/or upgrade the town's drinking water system. The purpose of this non-binding article is to gauge voter support for devoting municipal resources, including tax dollars, to this work. We took the feedback that was received and conferred with Attorney Ramsdale about this, and based on that feedback, Attorney Ramsdale re, uh, he rewrote this to essentially provide two different options. And I'll read the first one, this, this is in the, the draft warrant, and for those members of the public who want to take a look at it, it's, it's on the table over there as well. So option number one is, to see if the town supports raising at least several and likely tens of millions of dollars required to create a townwide drinking water system by acquiring, constructing, and/or upgrading the town's drinking water system. The purpose of this non-binding article is to gauge voter support for devoting municipal resources, including tax dollars, to attempting to secure a reasonable estimate of the cost of a townwide water system, and also to attempting to obtain federal and state grants to pay for as much of the cost of the system as possible, with the remainder of the cost of the townwide water system coming from bonds and tax revenue. Option number two, and these are mutually exclusive, so you would select one or the other, to see if the town supports the acquisition, construction, and/or creation of a townwide drinking water system to be paid through a combination of potentially available federal and state grants, bonds, and tax revenue. It is anticipated that a townwide drinking, drinking water system would cost millions, if not tens of millions of dollars, and the town would attempt to secure as much of the funding as possible through federal or state grants. This is a non-binding warrant article presented solely to assess the town's support for the creation of a townwide drinking water system, and does not authorize an appropriation to begin the process to secure such a system.
Okay, so I thank you for the reading on that. Mike, I'm bringing it back to the council, what do you got, what's your thoughts on this one?
I, I still struggle with the text.
Yeah, I do too.
I think it's a little bit better. I do think it's confusing. And, and the part that I struggle with is this, this, this sentence that says, it is anticipated that the town, a townwide drinking water system would cost millions, if not tens of millions of dollars, and the town would attempt to secure, I, I guess the attempt, that bothers me, to secure as much, the, the town would, um, I, I don't know. It's just something about it, I just, not quite sure. And the fact is that I'm not sure if it's gonna cost tens of millions at the point we're at, at this point right now. In the future, it may, but this is just to see if we want to look at it, and I can't imagine that the engineering costs to look at drinking water and putting the plan together is gonna cost tens of millions. I mean, I think it will cost millions, you know, maybe, but I don't think it will cost tens of millions. Putting in the system would cost tens of millions. We're not talking, because we don't even know if we want to put in a system, right?
I, I don't-
I mean, that's my, I, I'm reading this as you're getting the big picture, but this is just a sliver of the big picture, which is, right now, to retain some sort of an engineer, do some studies, have a plan, and, and figure out what the big picture is gonna cost us. Am I correct? At least, that's my assumption of what-
I think the point that I'm trying to make is, I agree with you, it's, it's more confusing than it, than it was. I, I mean, the, I could tell you that-
It's terribly confusing.
The intent, well, there was a lot of feedback and input that we got at the last hearing, that, that it was overly simplistic. So, the, the, here, here's the, the most important point that I think, and I, I agree that it's, it's, the more assumptions and factors that you put into it, the less helpful it is to draw, draw conclusions from, if it, if it were to pass or fail.
Right, because all we want to do is, we want to see if the people of this town would be willing to pay, to have-
Correct.
To pay-
To pay, exactly.
X amount of dollars, we don't know yet, because we don't know what they're gonna come back with, because we haven't gone out to research it, but-
That's incorrect.
I mean, I'm sure it's gonna be substantial, so we'd say, maybe millions, to, and he, put in the plan and figure out what our next steps are. The engineer to figure it out. And that's the only part we should be looking at, at the moment, because we can't say that this is gonna cost tens of millions of dollars, because we don't even know if the people want to put in a dr, or if it's even possible to put in this drinking water system.
So, Mr.-
I don't know, maybe I'm confused.
Mr. Chairman, if I can address those comments?
Please.
It is absolutely incorrect to say that we haven't taken steps to try to identify what it will cost. We have put in hundreds of man-hours and thousands of dollars in engineering and attorney's fees in order to do just that, and we know what it is going to cost, roughly.
For the engineering cost?
Uh, to, no, I, I would say that that's correct. We do not have an estimate of what the engineering cost would be, because we don't have a project. What we have is a cost for a townwide system, and that is somewhere in the neighborhood of $200 million. That system currently is owned by someone else, and if we are going to be, going into the water business, we're going to have to buy it from them. We have additional helpful information, which is that to do Phase 1 of, even, let's not even call it a townwide water system, let's call it a, you know, Western and Central London Dairy Water System. Phase 1 of that effort is a $50 million water main down High Range Road. The point that I was trying to make last time is, I really think it would be helpful to know from the voters. Is, are you supportive of raising tax revenue to pay for this? Not to pay for all of it, but to pay, perhaps not even to pay for the majority of it. Let's say, we're gonna get grant funding for 80% of it, or 90% of it, which I think is unrealistic. You're already spending big money, you're already spending millions of dollars, and that's before you even start to talk about the fact that there, there are going to be heavy engineering dollars being spent right off the, right off the top. I can tell you, if the, if the instructions that I get from, from the Town Council are, go, you know, full bore after a townwide water system, I'm going to be in front of the Town Council asking for either additional staff or significant dollars for consulting work, because we are nowhere close to being set up to pursue such an effort right now. I'm not trying to talk anybody out of this, but what I'm trying to highlight is the fact that we're going to need to spend money to do this. Even if we do a portion of it, we're going to be, be spending a lot of money. I would like to know from the voters if there are enough folks in town who would be amenable to raising tax money in order to start this effort.
And, and I understand that. Then, then I think we need to pick a path. Either you're saying townwide or a project, and personally, I'd rather see you pick a project. I'd rather, you said you got the numbers already, so we could just look right at those numbers and say, hit, to just do the, would you say, north, what, this, north and central part of the town, that area, right off the St. Croban decree? You said it would be 50 million to expand the pipelines and whatever needs to be done, and I think it would be a conversation with Pennechuck, if they're the people who are gonna be running it, that they would be profiting from this, that they would partner with us.
They're prohibited from-
Expanding?
From, they're a regulated utility.
I understand.
They're, they're not able to take on their own backs a portion of a project just because it's going to yield revenue.
Well, they can't ta, I've seen them put in with other towns to work on a project.
But they never pay for the project.
No, but they raised funds for it, they got the loan from the-
They, they may-
The drinking water group.
Be, uh, they may do the engineering, they may be the project manager. Pennechuck is not, uh, except through the rate, and they do, they certainly do make improvements and repairs to their, to their system through the rate, but the capital costs of expanding municipal water are, are not borne by Pennechuck, is my understanding.
Okay, well, I just think that, after listening last Thursday to what's going on, I was on a water Zoom meeting for Litchfield, Hudson, Merrimack, London Dairy, and listening to what's happening is very concerning about our health, our children. This is a real problem, and the fact that St. Croban's, the St. Congree may be here, the water doesn't stay, and it is expanding. Now you're talking, you know, real estate values changing because of the filter systems, they don't even know what to do with the filter systems, they don't know if after you clean the filters, they're even being able to clean out the PFOAs as good as they did when they first used, and like I said, they don't know where to even get rid of them. There are, these things are expanding, they've changed them to a different type of, so there's all kinds of stuff going on, and we're talking about cancers and children being, having issues, and these were medically documented, and I, I think some of the people that were, are in this audience that were on that phone call with me la, last Thursday, it was scary. You, you're talking about the health and livelihood of a community, and you want to talk economic development?
Counselor Paul, if I could just kind of bring it back to you.
I, I'm sorry, this is just really-
I, I just want to focus on the article, because I think what you're, what you're saying is very, very-
Well, the article is confusing.
Well, I, I, what I want to say is that I think what you're saying is that water is very, very important to the town, and I think that's why we're-
It's immensely important.
Exactly, and I think the council agrees, I think the whole board agrees here, that it's a very, very important topic, and we need to move, move forward, and we're having a ballot question. I think, if I may say, Counselors, Counselor, you're concerned with the wording, and I get it, because what we don't want to do is, we don't want to scare people into not saying that they're interested in it. So that, that's, that's really the, the gray area here.
Yeah.
But I get your point as well, Mr. Town Manager, that you want to tell them that it would take tax revenue. I think, I have a little bit of a solution to offer in a minute, but I just want to hear it from more people, if that's okay, Counselor.
Yeah, no, I just, thank you for understanding, and it's just frustrating, because-
That's a huge, huge subject, and we gotta, we, we gotta do something about it, and we are doing something about it, that's, that's the point. This is the first, the first iteration of, of action to that, I guess, not the first, but the first one we're putting on the ballot. Any other-
And if I could just say one, one sentence, Mr. Chairman, I agree that this is a pressing issue, uh, to everybody in Southern New Hampshire.
And everything I've heard from you has indicated that, private conversations one-on-one, and with other public, in other public places, so, we just, I guess, I guess the thing is the concern of the wording, but we can get through that. Any other councils want to comment? Yes, please, Jim.
I don't disagree with Deb. I mean, the total, all the value, if people are uneducated about it, will scare the hell out of them. You know, with a project like this, first thing that I would do, I would recommend, is that we go to the people, we have a water problem, we have a, a challenge, and find out how much it's gonna cost from Stan Tech or a, or a consultant on how much money it will cost to develop a program, to develop a program to show us how much it's gonna cost, and it's totalitarian, total, how much we can phase it out. That's the information we need before we move forward. Now, it costs, just the, the environmental engineering for exit 4A, it costs London Dairy $5 million, and it costs Dairy $5 million. That's $10 million. Engineering and consulting and trying to develop a report like this is not cheap. It's not $150 million, but I think what we need to do is we need to take the first step. Let's find an engineer, find out how much money it's gonna cost us, and, and let them work, let's find out what their fees are, and that's what we need to do first.
Thanks, Counselor, but, Counselor Paul, thank you very much. Any other? Okay, anybody from the, yes, please.
Yeah, I, I think, Jim, at the last meeting, the very end of it, you had a good suggestion, and you kind of brought it up again, and I don't see that here. Let's take a smaller bite of the apple. You know, I think when you say tens of millions of dollars, people are gonna vote this down. They're not, they're not seeing that, they're seeing tens of millions of dollars. Let's do what Jim is suggesting, let's take a smaller piece of it, present that to the voters, they do have a problem, let's, let's fix it, but let's find, let's not scare them.
And then the town can determine, okay-
Yeah.
Let's phase this out, and then we're educating the people, go along. I understand when you say $150 million.
Right.
I get it. I know how much a new high school costs.
Yeah.
But that's next year's, but that's next year's ballot, right? That's next year's ballot, probably, not this year's ballot.
Yeah.
Any, any other? Yeah, so down here?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Malaguti, my, my concern is, what happens if the voters turn this down? What's our next step?
Non-binding.
I know, I know it's non-binding, but what's our next step? There's some expectation that they voted it down, that something would happen.
Right. And, and I do, I do want to say that a lot of this stuff that we need from these engineers is already, I don't know if Jim's, have you looked at any of this stuff? We got it at DES, they've already done half the studies.
That's what I hear, but you have to hire your own consultant that you're paying for, that you're telling them what to do, to really come out with an acceptable engineering plan.
Correct. So I, I think that if, if this were to fail, I think that there are a number of things that the town should do. First of all, education is, is an important piece of this, and that is, a lot of people are, don't know what, believe it or not, still do not know what PFAS is, don't know what arsenic is, and I think that the town should lean in to educating the public to make sure that they understand the importance of this issue. I think that insuring that the rebate program that DES has for mitigating wells against PFAS is a powerful tool. I don't think everybody understands that it's there. I think that that is some, something that the town can continue to work with DES on to make sure that it's, it's continuing to take care of the, the problem on a per-household basis. I think that, you know, there are, there are water infrastructure upgrades that, that certainly, whether you want to talk about PFAS, or whether you want to talk about other issues that we're having, we should continue to look at and invest in. I'm not suggesting that this is a referendum on should the town ever invest a dime more on water infrastructure. I think we should. But I think that, you know, this is, and again, I want to emphasize that this, this warrant article, this question arises from advice- article, this question arises from advice that we received from council, that, that we need to make sure that people understand that there's going to be a cost that's associated with this, and it's going to be a cost that likely requires us to raise some tax revenue. So I don't know if that is directly responsive to your question, but I don't view this as a light switch, you know, that we would be turning the light off on human health, water infrastructure, water, water source, water supply.
And I think that's my question, I know we're not. And I support moving forward 100% too. But the way the question is written, someone could say, I don't support it, I'm going to vote no, and then why are you doing anything? We voted that down.
I understand, yeah, that's a, that's a good point.
Going back to the auditorium across the street as an example.
Right, no, that's a, that's a good point.
And the longer we, we push this out, the more and more health concerns, the more and more concerns we have, the more and more it's going to cost. We talk about this all the time and everything else, so the longer we push out fixing the roads or fixing a building, it's going to cost more and more and more. Well, the longer we push this out, it's going to cost us more and more and more.
Right, and I just want to make it clear as well that there are a number of things that the town has been doing in the past year. We've been working with DES and awaiting, frankly, feasibility studies from DES that just came in late last year. We have been, or in the later part of last year, if memory serves, we have been working with our attorneys to determine whether it's feasible to recover money from St. Cobain. As I've told you, as Attorney Ramsdale has told you, as other attorneys have told you, the town is not able to do that. But we've done that work, we've looked at the, the law on that. It took a while, it took some resources, frankly, so the town's already spending money on this. We answered that question. There is a cost of service study that's underway, that we don't have results from yet, that's going to tell us an important question before we start down the road of a townwide water system. What would the rates look like? I think that, you know, you hear a lot of complaints about Pennechuck's rates. Are we going to build out a townwide water system if we can't offer rates that are at least as competitive as Pennechuck's? Probably not. And so we need an answer to that question. That study is going to tell us as well, what does Pennechuck's, Pennechuck's infrastructure cost? We need to know what we would be buying, or even a portion of it, what it's going to cost. And so I understand that the perception is that, you know, we're not doing anything, and we're pushing everything off. Why aren't we applying for, you know, grant money because we don't have a project? I don't think it, I don't think the taxpayers would, would support building a pipe to nowhere. Because recall the $50 million project that I talked about, which is the water main down High Range Road? That doesn't bring water into anybody's neighborhood. It may serve, it will serve residences off of High Range Road, that's it. When you're building out into the neighborhoods, you're talking about many millions of dollars more. So we need an answer to this question before we can start portioning out the system.
So how much would that question cost to be answered?
I don't know, sitting here, I can't answer that.
Here we have another question.
Yeah, so Mike, is there, is there a legal reason why we have to say tens of millions of dollars? Can't we word this so that it's, you're not going to gauge an opinion by this? People are going to see tens of millions of dollars, and they're going to vote no. You're not going to get someone's opinion.
Hang on to that, hang on to that thought from mom, and I have a suggestion. Any other? Tim, yes, Tim, sorry.
Your first one you were reading comes up here and says, you know, costs at least and likely tens of millions of dollars and stuff, but then farther down in it, it says you're attempting to secure a reasonable estimate of the cost of a townwide water system. So if we're telling them we're trying to get an estimated cost of it, why are we giving them an estimated 10 to 10s of millions of dollars? If that's what we're trying to find out what it is? Why not just leave it out and say, are you guys interested in trying to find out what it would cost for us to provide a townwide water system? We'll come back with maybe what it will cost, what it's going to take, how many projects or phases it would be, maybe, you know, if it's even feasible, because it's going to cost $10 million just to find out this study, you know, to get like an engineer's drawing or stuff.
Tim, I got a, an amendment that I worded out, so hopefully that'll address that situation so you know.
Right, because that's part of what we're going to look for, is to give them the estimate of the cost, so let's don't scare them off with the cost before we get the estimate.
Good, good.
We'll scare them then.
All right, anything else from the council or the Budget Committee, so I can go to the public? Okay, so right now we are talking about Article number 15. I'll go to the public for questions and comments. Please state your name and address for the record.
Ray Burson, 3 Gary Drive. Okay. This thing with water is nothing new. I can go back to 2013, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18. It's gone on for at least 10 years. That we've been aware of this situation, very serious situation with water. Doesn't have all to do with St. Gobens, it has to do with a lot of things. For us to think that we're going to sue St. Gobens and go into that deal and spend all kinds of money, if the state wants to do that, the Attorney General, all willing to do it. Okay, so here we are. And we need to have a plan as to where we're going to proceed forward with this. And by the way, Weston Sampson has done multiple studies, not cost necessarily, but, and I could be wrong, but I don't think the town even paid for that. I think the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services paid for that. Is that correct?
For the feasibility study that includes the $50 million project that I'm talking about, but also shows the, the concept of a townwide water system.
It shows the whole concept of a townwide water system. But where is Londonderry's plan? Is that Londonderry's plan? That's what Weston Sampson, a very good engineering company, looked at and said, this is what we think makes sense. And then they come back to the town and said, what do you guys think? And by the way, the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services is our partner that can really help us out, getting some federal money. And yes, that has to be approved by the Governor's Council. But where is our plan? Where is our plan? It has to be broken down into increments. Okay, so the initial plan, Phase 1, to bring a 16-inch line down High Range Road, and somebody come up with a cost of $50 million. Well, that's a start. Only a start. But we should be looking at, the town should have a plan, we need a water line going all the way down Mammoth Road. We don't have hardly any municipal water south of 102. As a matter of fact, we don't have much sewer there either. We're looking at building this town out by 2035, and then it's going to be all built out. You damn well better have your infrastructure in place. We should have started a long time ago. This was a country town with a bunch of Appalachians, at least when I moved here 50 years ago. It's changed, not all bad, some are good. But we haven't proceeded along with our infrastructure, infrastructure, whatever you want to call it. Where is the town's plan to break this down into increments? Where is the line up here on Mammoth Road, the 8-inch line that Pennechuck, is Pennechuck's line? Who's talking, who from the town is talking to Pennechuck and saying, we want that line replaced? We want a 16-inch line in there, because we want fire protection down here, over to Woodmart, as a matter of fact, and to the rest of town. Now, I'm not here to lecture anybody, to tell anybody they're not doing their job right, but damn it, we need a plan. Where is the plan?
Thank you for your comments, Brad. Do you have any others? Thank you for that.
That's it?
Yeah, no, do you have any others? I know, I think I heard about the plan, we get it. I think the board definitely agrees with you, and we're going to move forward. But I just, do you have anything for Article number 15 that you wanted to comment on?
Well, Article 15, once again, I'm glad it was looked at, I'm glad it was rewritten, but once again, I've got a problem with it, as a lot of other people do too. We need to say, this is what we're going to move forward in, and initially, it's going to cost $10,000, no, $10 million. Let's pick a figure, you know, and this is what we're thinking we need to do initially.
Okay, got it. Thank you for those. Thank you so much. Anybody else would like to comment on this article?
Joe, stupid question. Can we say that we want to, kind of like what Justin did last year with the pickleball court, you know, or the sensory fund? No, 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 no. How they set up, like you do a maintenance fund, like a water maintenance fund. And so, I mean, if you're looking to ask people to put money into it, maybe we need to set up a water maintenance fund that happens, you know, we're going to ask people every year, do you want to fund this? Or, you know, maybe it's for a specific project separate, we say, you know, for this, we need $50 million for this pipeline, or we need, you know, but this would be a fund that would go in there that would cover legal, engineering, the basic costs like that, like, do you know what I'm trying to say?
You're looking to establish a capital reserve fund.
I'm sorry?
Capital reserve.
You're looking to establish a capital reserve.
Yeah, like, that's, I think, maybe an easier pill to swa, I don't know if it's too late to change all of this, or, I don't know, I'm sorry, go ahead. It just came to me that way.
I just wanted to say really quick that I think we want to try to, if you don't mind, try to stay on subject on Article number 15, I'm trying to stay on subject. All the things that we're saying here are definitely important, water is extremely, extremely important to the town. I think personally, myself, as a chair, just to speak, I have a proposed amendment for the article, but I think it goes beyond this article. This is just to see if people would like to look at a townwide drinking system. But for the plan, for what we're doing moving forward, we don't need an article for that. We know we got to do something with the water, we've been doing something with the water. We need to move forward and keep moving forward. That, I don't think we need an article for. I think everybody is in agreement in the town. This is just one particular question that we want to go forward, so I agree with everything you're saying. It may be that next time, next year, we, we're coming up and saying, hey, we need $10 million, you know, this is the hope, this is what it's all going to cost out because we've done this article.
Right.
But to your point, Deb, we get it, once this is done, we get the yes or no on this thing, we're going to know which direction we get headed in, and start, and start writing it down and getting it done.
But I do think we need what
So if you don't, I mean, I checked on this, I checked in on this, I think back in 2019, 2020, around there, if we could establish something similar to what you're saying is a capital reserve fund for water. DRA informed me in order to establish a capital reserve fund for water, we would need to have a water system. It's kind of a catch 22 that we can't. I was not thrilled. I don't know if all of this new stuff has come to light, I can reach out to them to see, but I have looked into that before, because to me, that made sense, is putting it away piece by piece, and in case you haven't been able to tell, I'm a big fan of not burning the taxpayers at once.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, you know, that we could do something
I don't know if that's changed. I did look into it, and I was told that we can't have a capital reserve fund for something we don't have.
Okay, so public, please come on, can you please come to the microphone, please, with a name and address? Sorry, apologize.
Just sit up here.
Christine Perez, 5 Wesley Drive. I think what you need to ask people for first is the money for a study for a plan, okay? Study for a plan. Can you establish a fund that is a fund for a plan? For, for
Yep, I know what you're trying to say, and if you don't, if you don't mind me cutting you off, I'm not, I don't, I don't know, I haven't asked that aspect yet. I'm not sure if maybe we could establish, since we have general engineering capital reserve fund
That's what I mean.
To allow for not only this, but, I mean, we've talked about other aspects with the energy efficiency and things of that nature to allow for that. I don't know, that's a great question that I can ask DRA about.
I think the problem with the article is, is because I've had the fortune of being able to talk to people who are very in tune with all of this, because I'm a research crazy person, as you know. But I think if you put this before the people and they say no, then you've cut off your neck, you can't do anything. If people say no, they're not interested, and you move ahead with a plan, you're going against what the people said. So I think you're going to cut off your, people are, I would be very surprised if people voted yes on this article. So my suggestion to you is either eliminate it or write it as a, would you be, would you be receptive to preparing an engineering plan to bring the cost to the town in the future? That type of thing, so.
Thank you for that. Any other? Make this the last one, so we can move on with this, guys. Oh, you got one from the Budget Committee? Okay, that'll be the last one, yep, thank you.
Yeah, look, the basic thing is here, I think we need a water committee. We need a water committee in this town to look at this problem and, and come up with a plan. We need a plan, and we need, we need to have a committee set aside just for this. Please, thank you.
Takes the burden off of the town.
Mr. Chair, didn't you say you had an amendment?
Yeah, I do, but I just say one more, and then I'm going to present the amendment, we can talk about the amendment.
I think you're going to have
Name and address for the record, sorry.
Tim Segman, Budget Committee.
Oh, Budget Committee, sorry.
You're going to have to be careful with the money part of it. Reason for, I got a house on the east side of town, it's a well, septic. The other house is on town water. The town water house, I got a water bill of $100 a month, I don't have that. The electric bills vary by about $20 difference, okay? So that water bill comes in, that's like an extra $100. Knowing that, when I read this thing, I'm thinking, first thing I think, because my well tests fine, so then I come up in here and I read likely 10s to 10s of millions of dollars, I'm not voting for that, I'm staying on my well. I have no incentive to move off a well. Do I think that well will eventually get probably poisoned with the rest of the stuff? Probably. But you're going to have more pushback against it when you talked about a dollar, if people are not on town water. So if you're just looking to do a study to see what this is going to be, you're better off leaving the money out of it, because people on a well, if they know what town water costs, will look at this and say, there's not a chance, you know? Even if it's only $100 a month, like it is for us, you know? If I had it my way, I'd put that house on a well and get rid of that $100 a month. Now, if I lived out on High Range Road, I'd be screaming, where's the town water? You know, because water's bad. So you kind of got to know your audience and where they're coming from, which part of town, and what they're doing to kind of judge it. How are you going to get the whole town behind this? People out on the west side, vote 100% for it. People over on the east side, get 0% for it. Somewhere in the middle, who knows? So be careful trying to mention like millions of dollars when we're also saying, we're also attempting to secure a reasonable estimate of the cost. So if we're going to get a reasonable estimate of the cost, let's don't scare them with 10s of millions of dollars ahead of time, you know? We'll tell them that once we get that reasonable estimate of what it's going to cost them. So I don't understand why the lawyer says we got to put that, yeah, we know, anyone in their right mind that knows about it, if you're going to run the water business, it's going to be $100 million to put town water to every house. I mean, a 16-inch line down three main streets down through town, you know, coming from north to south, that's going to be $150 million minimum right there, not counting out to everybody's individual houses and stuff. So it's, it's going to be high, everyone knows it's going to be high. So let's see if there's a way to word it to say, hey, we just want to study, are you guys interested in this or not? Should we even look at it and see if they're interested in it? I think you'll get a bigger response on that.
Thank you for that. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to, before we move Yes, but is it additional, or, let's not just keep repeating, I know you won't, but this, okay, great, yeah.
I don't want to overstep my bounds, but I know that we have our town engineer here. He's got expertise that I don't have, I don't think anyone up here has. I could be wrong, I apologize if you do. I would like to hear his opinion as our town engineer on how we should address this. Has anyone asked him before? Just curious. Have we asked the town, has he been involved in this? I don't know, Mike, that's, but I, if it's possible, I would like to hear, to see what he has to say.
If it's possible, I would like to hear, to see what he has to say.
So, I mean, I'll say this, I mean, so he does... John's like me, he doesn't like to wing it. He likes to come prepared, and I just...
But I think he has more knowledge than a lot of the people in this room, including myself.
He certainly does.
So when I'm trying to look to solve a problem, I'm going to go to the people that have some of the expertise. A town engineer puts together budgets for road reconstruction, and he looks at these things. So I just would like to throw it out to him and get his opinion on how he sees, how should we position ourselves with it?
So, but Council of Ball, I just wanted to... I just, what I'm trying to do is, I'm trying to get, remain to this question. So, I mean, the thing is that we either want to put this on the warrant, or we don't want to put it on the warrant. I'm not sure that we can... I think one of the things, again, remind me if I'm wrong, if we change the notion or the definition of this too, too much, it's going to completely change the article. And I think we can do some wording, but it has to remain the same thought process. In other words, we're talking about here, a water system, and we can't really just start talking about a bus system, you know what I mean?
Well, so you're correct if we were at the deliberative, but there is no warrant yet. You could get rid of it. You could change it to a bus system.
Let me offer an amendment to this wording, just to put that out on the table, and then we can beat this up a little bit. So it's really very, very simple, because I think all of the people that have spoken really have talked to this. But take a look at the second paragraph, and really what I'm going to do, I'm going to read it, but I'm going to take away the middle part. So please listen to the flow of this. "To see if the town supports the acquisition, construction, and/or creation of a townwide drinking water system to be paid for through a combination of potential available federal and state grants and tax revenue. This is a non-binding warrant article presented solely to assess the town's support for the creation of a townwide drinking water system." And that's really the essence of what we're talking about here. "And does not authorize an appropriation to begin the process to secure in such a system." Simply said, we're just asking on this question, "Do you want us to look into a water system?" We don't have to get into all these different words and definitions. You cut out the middle, don't scare people. I give enough credit to the townspeople to be intelligent enough to know that this is not going to cost a million dollars or two. I mean, people know numbers. It's going to be tens of millions, and maybe possibly hundreds of millions. We're not going to know that, like you said earlier, until we do those type of studies. This is the starting gate. We're asking, "Is there interest?" Period. So let's move this.
I think that clarifies it quite a bit.
Thank you, Joe.
I would support that.
Thank you, Joe.
All right, so any other question?
I make one adjustment.
Please.
Can we adjust tax revenue to through taxation or...
Whatever love the word that you need to define tax revenue.
Sorry, that's just...
Taxation? All right. All right, I'm going to reread into the record. You just like to hear me talk, huh? All right. "To see if the town supports the acquisition, construction, and/or creation of a townwide drinking water system to be paid for through a combination of potential available federal and state grants, bonds, and taxation..." Taxation. "This is a non-binding warrant article presented solely to assess the town's support for the creation of a townwide drinking water system, and does not authorize an appropriation to begin the process to secure such a system."
Can I make one?
Here we go, yes.
Suggested amendment to...
I'm really writing this on...
I think it probably should say local taxation, because of how that sentence is structured. It's unclear whether it's state or...
Okay, put in local, I'm not rereading. All right. Yes.
I know, I was agreeing with Mike.
All right. So now I'm going to move it to accept a motion to move the article as amended to the warrant.
So moved.
Okay. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Hearing a motion in a second. All those in favor of moving this article as amended, Article number fifteen as amended to the warrant, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Chairman votes affirmative, that's four, zero, as amended. I have the notes if you need them. Next one for the council is, in favor of recommending this article as written and as amended, sorry, not as written, but as amended. Do you recommend this? Please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? And unopposed, so the council recommends this, four, zero. Do I have a Article sixteen, Mike? Reader.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, "Transaction of other business. To transact any other business that may legally come before this meeting, no business enacted under this article shall have any binding effect upon the town."
Do we need a vote to move this to the warrant?